Dean, I would first like to apologize for the delay of the meeting. We were in executive session and our goal is that we are going to, we interrupted executive session, we are going to come back, we are going to do public, the public sections of this, and then we will probably delay the other pieces of our meeting until a later date, and we will return to executive session. But we apologize for keeping you, and I am very sorry for that, so. So we are going to start with the pledge, sorry.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, if we could just try to put cellphones on vibrate or something soft, that would be great. Yep, yep, I will. So in terms of the meeting, I just briefly alluded to the fact that we are going to cover the recognition and the student reports, so number five and six on the agenda, we will, we have a piece of the superintendent's report that will be public as well, and then, if I am correct, it is eleven C, which is the first reading and the approval of the robotics trip to Louisville, Kentucky, and that is it, correct?
Does we have time for the budget update? Next meeting is...
Yeah, we should do the budget update, too. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. So I'm going to go to public comments for agenda items only, please. Alright, I will then turn to Dr. Scuzzarella for recognition of the students.
Hi. Whoa, that's loud. Thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize our students this evening, and I'm trying to keep track of who is not here. Just so you know, I did, we did give them the written notification, and we also emailed this time to be sure everyone understood. So, the first student is, I know is not here, but I do want to make the committee aware that we did have a National Merit Scholarship finalist, Brian Davis. I do expect he will be getting the actual National Merit Scholarship, and will be notified of that in a few weeks, but he's worked his way through that competition, and he was, we were notified that he's a finalist, so it's pretty exciting for us to have a National Merit finalist again. So our first recognition is for the Boston College Model United Nations Outstanding Delegate is our student Zach Bontempo. The next set of awards is from the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, and I know we have three students who were recognized at our Drama Fest 2015 competition, they received All-Star Acting Awards, we have Brooke Holland, Hannah Hudson-Ski, and Alex Tron. Our next award is the Massachusetts Education, Music Educators Association, we had one student selected to perform in the All-Star Band, and that is Kunal Galla. So now we'll move on, we have a number of awards for our students who participated in the DECA program, they recently competed in the state competition, so we have Olivia Robinson and Alyssa Lash, who were top ten in the Public Relations Project. Are either girls here? Nope. I know Celia's here. We also had a wonderful first-place finish, Entrepreneurship Franchise, first place is Cecilia DeSalvo. Cecilia DeSalvo. Entrepreneurship Participating, Creating an Independent Business, top-ten finisher, Chris Bosco. Don't see him. Hospitality and Tourism Operations, top-ten, the team of Rebecca Riedel, Emily Billicki, and Richie Testa. And we also had another group in there for top-ten, Rebecca Barnes, I know she's not here, Stephanie Stabile and Brianna Scali. Nope. Alright, Sports and Entertainment Marketing Testing Competency Certificate to Paul Wolfstromer, Ben Naftow, Alex Romano, and Zach Wolfgang. Alright, Travel and Tourism and Qualifying for Nationals, Nick Sorasso and Jake Burkhart. Nick's out at Lacrosse. We also had fifth-place finishers, also qualifying for Nationals, Doug Starrett and Shannon McElroy. Testing competency in that same category of travel and tourism, Danielle McGuire and Rebecca Hardy. Financial Services Role Play, third place, Ariana Limonius and Yorushima Dany. Creative Marketing Project, third place, qualifying for Nationals, Zach Bontempo, Jack Kelly, and Brett Kachansky. Sports and Entertainment Marketing Testing Competency Certificate, Nick Holm. Buying and Merchandising Operations Research, top-ten, Lindsay West, Carolyn Roach, and Yanni Filaris. Financial Literacy Promotion Project, second place, qualifying for Nationals, Kylie Piotti, I know she's working, and fourth place is Alisa Dixon. It is. Oh dear, we just jumped to athletics, hold on here. Principles of Hospitality and Tourism Testing Competency Certificate, Jonathan Cooperstein. Entrepreneurship Promotion Project, top-ten finishers, Nicole Donato, Sarah Gudrow, and Automotive Service Marketing Role Play, second place, Neil Shaban. Restaurant and Food Service Management Testing Competency Certificate, Lucia Gabriello. I know Basil's not here, first-place finish for us, Principles of Marketing, and Basil is promising a first place at Nationals. So he's under big pressure here. He's committed. Retail Merchandising, we had, and so Basil's going to Nationals, and Retail Merchandise, we have a fifth-place finish, Kyra Brown, I know she's not here, but she's also going to Nationals. Marketing Management, top-ten, Joe Guggenberger. And the last DECA category, Business Services Operations, Alyssa Dalton, Rachel Damian, Molly Dalton, top-ten finishers. So the next set of awards will be for our Winter Athletes, and I'm going to ask Scott Young to come up, and I'll do my best to assist.
Good evening, everybody. That's loud. The winter, while not great weather-wise, was excellent athletically. Our teams finished with an overall record of ninety-one, fifty-six, and six, it's a fifty-nine point four winning percentage, we crowned state champions, North Section champions, as well as league champions, with individual state champs, as well as a New England champion. We had four hundred and forty-eight student athletes participate in our programs this winter, representing about thirty-three percent of our student body. It's also worth noting that the pep band performed at each home Boys and Girls Basketball game throughout the winter, the energy and talent that the band brings to each home game has become a staple of what basketball at Crozier has come to be known for. We don't have a certificate, but we would like to publicly thank the pep band. The varsity cheerleading was once again led by Coach Rachel Bople, and Captains Maggie Boyle, Molly McLean, and Amanda Cunningham. The girls had a great season cheering at all of our home basketball games, and the squad improved throughout the season and added to the excitement in our fieldhouse, and once again, we'd like to thank our cheerleaders. For the second year, we competed as a co-op in girls hockey with Haverhill and Penn Tucket, the team was known as HPNA. Coach Gary Kane led the team, that consisted of twelve North Andover girls, they finished with a thirteen, five, and three record, and a berth in the state tournament at the Division One level, in only the team's second year of existence. Captains Alex Cassell, Maggie Belanger, and Michaela Kane were leaders on and off the ice. The team hosted a Pink the Rink fundraiser that raised nearly a thousand dollars for the Voices of Hope and the Mass General Cancer Research. The co-op will continue for next year, and Kim Carroll was honored as an All-League Honorable Mention. Boys Basketball, the Boys Hoop Team had another great season, they finished ten and twelve overall, eight and seven in league. The team qualified for the state tournament, defeating Beverly in their first game before falling to Brighton in the quarterfinals. The team was led by Coach Paul Tangliss, and Captains Wabisa Beedi, Miles Komusian, and Spencer Reeve. Wabisa Beedi will be honored tonight for quite a slew of things, he was a Merrimack Valley Conference MVP, Boston Globe, Boston, and the Boston Herald All Scholastic. He was second-team All-State, and we don't have a certificate, but just recently, he was named by the Tribune as an All-Star, actually as the MVP in the Tribune. The girls' basketball team was led by Coach Meg Ryan, they finished their season sixteen and six, twelve and six in the league, which was good for second place. Captains Megan Collins and Leah Chittick led the Knights to the finals of the Commonwealth Christmas Classic, the quarterfinals of the State North Tournament. The girls also hosted a great event called Hoops for Hill, in which they raised nearly two thousand dollars towards cancer research. Tonight, we honor Leah Chittick and Meg Collins, they were both named All-Conference by the Merrimack Valley. Gymnastics was led by first-year head coach Megan Butrus, North Andover graduate, led the gymnastics teams to a six-and-four record, and an invitation to the North Sectional Championships. Captains Emma Fennessy, I can't read, Nicole Stevens led the team to some great scores. Tonight, we honor Nicole Stevens, she was named Merrimack Valley All-Conference, she won the state championship on the beam, advanced to the New England's where she placed third on the beam, and was named All-Scholastic, Nicole Stevens. Boys Indoor Track Team had a great winter, they ran their way to a six-and-oh record, the MVC Championship. Coach Steve Nugent guided the boys to the Division Two State Relay Championship. Captains Zach Frelick, Chris Dawkey, Brian Davis, and Joe Stout successfully led the team to great heights. At this time, we'd like to ask the captains to come up and be honored for all of their team championships. Owen Jordan, Joe Stout, and Juca Morales were named All-Conference. And Coach Steve Nugent was named the MVC Coach of the Year, as well as the Boston Globe Coach of the Year. Girls Indoor Track, equally impressive, had a great winter campaign led by Coach Rick Delakai, Captains Michaela Guthrie, Mary Lavery, and Sabrina Frelick. They led the Knights to a five-and-one regular season, and a tie for first place in the MVC. Most impressive, the team won its third straight Division Two State Relay Championship. The girls also won the MVC Team Sportsmanship Award. At this time, we'd ask the captains, Michaela, Mary, and Sabrina to come up and be recognized for the team championships. The track team also had All-Conference Honoraries, Catherine Flaherty, Alexa Lane, and Mary Lavery. Boys Ice Hockey, Head Coach Pete Marfion guided his team to a five, thirteen, and three record in the competitive MVC DCL Combined League. Captains Alex Martino, Patrick Sweeney, and Nick Deduka did a great job leading this youthful team this year. The team played with class and style all year long. Alex Martino was named All-Conference. Alex. Boys Skiing, Coach Connor Meehan, and Captains Luke Hitchcock and David Eisenberg led the team to an eight-and-four regular season and third place in the North Shore Ski League. Junior Connor Masterson was named All-League by the North Shore Ski League. Girls Skiing, Captains Kira Brown, Emily Carwell, and Jess Mermelstein led the team to a ten-and-oh record, and a North Shore Ski League Championship. Head Coach Connor Meehan also guided the team to the Inter-Scholastic Championship, and the team capped off its perfect year with a state championship in the MIA Alpine Ski Championships. At this time, we ask Captains Kira, Emily, and Jess to come be recognized for the team accomplishments. Continuing with Girls Ski, Maria Cavalaro, Rachel Cavalaro, Olivia Kilier, and Cameron Deary were all named All-League. Coach Connor Meehan was named the Boston Globe Coach of the Year, Connor Meehan. Boys Swimming, Head Coach Erin Command guided the very young team to a two-and-five record in the pool, Captains Aiden Walsh, Tim DeVoe, and Tom Doty did a great job building the team and preparing them for success. Dylan Walsh, Aiden Walsh, Frank Zhao, and Tim DeVoe teamed up and set two school relay records, and Aiden Walsh and Frank Zhao are honored tonight as All-Conference Honoraries. Wrestling, the powerhouse wrestling program continued its great tradition of success under the guidance of head coach Kyle Sincotta. The team had a regular season record of twenty-two and six, and was crowned the Division Two North Champions. Steven Sincotta is honored tonight, he was crowned a state champion, as well as named All-Conference and All-Scholastic, Steven Sincotta. We also recognize our captains, Fritz Hayne, Peter Taylor, and Steven Sincotta, and ask them to come up and be honored for the team accomplishments this year. Fritz Hayne. Jack Perry honored as a North Sectional Champion. Once again, Peter Taylor was named North Sectional Champion. Fritz Hayne, Fritz Hayne was crowned a state champion, a New England champion, he was undefeated this season, he was named New England's Outstanding Wrestler, he was named the Merrimack Valley Conference Wrestler of the Year, as well as Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic. We honor Fritz Hayne tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Before you leave, I just want to say a quick word, I mean, again, I apologize for keeping you late, but this is just amazing, I mean, to hear the number of awards that go out that are athletic and then academic with the programs that are out there, unbelievable job, so I am very proud of all of you, and thank you for representing North Andover as well as you all do, thank you. Alright, so we'll skip that, we are going to, sorry, jump to number nine, the Superintendent Report, for one of the components that you have tonight.
Sure. Let's do, this one isn't written down there, but we have, we received notice that a teacher has been accepted into some exceptional professional development, it's not unusual for our teachers to be involved in a lot of professional development, and when certain situations comes up that have a certain level of notoriety, we want to acknowledge it, and we have a teacher at the middle school, Pat McGravy, who's here, and I'm going to ask Greg Gilligan to expound on his accomplishments a little bit.
Well, I'll make it brief, but it's an honor and privilege to introduce Patrick McGravy tonight to the audience and to the folks at home. He's been a social studies teacher here at North Andover for close to two decades, he served as the Social Studies Coordinator at NAMS, he's a graduate of UMass Amherst with a degree in history, a master's from Boston College, and over the years, I can truly say, Pat has gone the extra mile to grow professionally and bring that knowledge back to his colleagues. Through his desire to grow professionally, he's participated in some extraordinary events during his own time, often with a great deal of travel, with not always the best reimbursement from us over at Central Office, so, but he has, through the National Endowment for Humanities, he's participated in Historic Deerfield, this summer, he'll be participating in the Constitution Project in Philadelphia, he's traveled to Monticello to study Virginia's role in the American Revolution, he's participated in the Guild of Lerman Convention on Lincoln at the University of Oxford, he was named a Mount Vernon Association Scholar, class of two thousand and four, and most recently, Pat has some really exciting news, and we're just going to call him up for a brief minute or so, but he's been selected by C-SPAN to participate in a program this summer, he was selected for this teaching fellowship to participate in Washington DC, and he was only one of three social studies teachers in the entire United States selected for this honor to work with some of their curriculum materials, so I wanted to invite up Pat McGravy to just give a little more on that for us tonight, thank you, Pat.
Thanks for those kind words. What Gillie's referencing is, I'm going to be doing a fellowship this summer in Washington DC for C-SPAN, I'm going to be in DC on Capitol Hill for four weeks, and I'm going to be working with C-SPAN, with their website, designing curriculum, meeting with representatives in the national government. The process of application was pretty tough, I had to apply in January, and from what I'm told, hundreds applied, and I was made a finalist, and the one thing that I just definitely want to mention is, this is recognition of me, but it's also in recognition of my students, because a huge part of me being selected was, I had to submit lessons that I did with my students, and the real exciting thing was, I had to film a lesson with my students that I sent to C-SPAN, and then they watched, the Board of Directors watched my students, literally doing some of the C-SPAN curriculum materials on their website, so I had, I didn't want to do So I had, I didn't want to do it during the school day to complicate the schedule, so I asked for volunteers, and I got over fifty kids that came after school on their own to be filmed in my classroom. Students helped me film it, and it was not structured. It was very, very unedited. It was just raw, and they thrived, and they were amazing. And I celebrate this with all of them, because the kids in North Andover, they're just amazing. And when I got the phone call that they accepted me, the CEO, the person in charge of the ed program said, "No offense, Patrick, but your materials were great, but it's your students" which got you this. So I was able to tell my students that, and they were beaming, and they were cheering, and it was just a wonderful thing for me to go through with my students, and it just really reflects just the high quality of children that are in this town and how they were willing to come after school and be filmed and be so excited. Their parents have been wonderful in supporting me. I also want to recognize Joan, Matt, and especially Cheryl Raimondo. Cheryl was my cheerleader throughout the entire process, and they were just great. I just can't speak more highly of them, and I'm thrilled to be leaving. I'll be going for four weeks in July. I'm going to be there two weeks on my own, and then I'm going to bring my wife Amy and my six-year-old and my four-year-old Bennett and Xander. So they're going to live in DC for a couple of weeks, which is very exciting to them, and I'm going to bring back tons of stuff that hopefully I can share with my students and with all my colleagues in North Andover. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations, and I just want to say that I know one of your students, and she was absolutely thrilled to even be included in the video and was so proud of you, that when, I think you sent an email out to the parents.
I did. Yeah, I sent an email out to the parents in one of my blast.
And she immediately called and was like, "You're never going to believe." The video I was talking to you about, they selected it, and how proud of you she was, not the fact that her daughter was included, but just that you were her child's teacher. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Pat.
Can I just say, you know, one thing that Pat forgot to mention, that he's also a product of the schools here, and, you know, I know I'm proud of you for making this accomplishment. I think we should really treasure those teachers that, you know, grew up in this town, educated in this town, and decided to stay here and give back. So, thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you, thank you. And hopefully, if I can, I'd like to come back in the fall and share with you some of the things that I've done. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Can I, I just, we missed one young lady who is here. I just want to be sure she gets her certificate. Kelly Rogers is a top-ten finisher in personal finance and literacy. Thank you.
Next, we have a group of teachers coming forth to do a little follow-up on our last professional development presentation. Oftentimes, as educators, we take a lot for granted, so when we talk about pre-and post-assessments and how we've changed them and that type of thing, we know them. We know what we're talking about, we know what they look like, but we don't necessarily show all the products. So this time, we decided to come back with a few teachers that have gone through a process of examining the rigor in assessments. That's one of the focuses that we have this year in our strategic plan, as well as in our focus and our evaluation. So I'm going to ask Greg Gilligan to start this off, and I think it's going to get turned over to Cara Lockham after that. Lockham, sorry.
Yeah, great, and I'll be as brief as possible. You know, as we continue to revisit where we had our last presentation, we have cohorts of folks in content areas and teachers working with our facilitators of collaborative inquiry around rigor and relevance. And when we talk about rigor and relevance, it's really a practice of examining our common assessments and our different assessments through the lens of Bloom's Taxonomy, particularly how it's evolved over the, all the years, several iterations of it, and even more importantly, the work we've done looking at web's depth of knowledge levels and how it's connected to having those questions and exams and assessments that really have higher-order thinking skills. So with that, that really ties directly to our strategic plan, I'm going to turn it over to our STEM Director for K-12, Cara Lockham, along with Deb Delisandro-Daly from the high school, and Amy O'Teary.
Thank you. So as Mr. Gilligan mentioned, big tie to our strategic plan, and Mary Gregor and I presented to you, not too long ago, the connections and where our facilitators are working with teachers across the district, looking at student work and data, examining their practice to make it as best as possible and continue to grow that practice. And the critical thinking piece has been a strong focus this year. So that's a piece we're here to speak to you a little bit more about tonight. Bloom's Taxonomy originated in 1956 and developed levels of thinking. In 1990s, they changed it to verbs with the idea that in order to learn and acquire new information, there's an act of doing involved. Web's Depth of Knowledge came out in 2002 and simplifies it a little bit into just four categories. If we look at the levels, Level One is recall and reproduction, so those simpler questions that are asked, the who's, the what, when, where. Level Two is basic, excuse me, basic application of skills and concepts, so taking it just a little bit deeper in the level of thinking. Step Three expands upon that and goes much more in-depth. How can you use it? Why can you use it? Step Four really takes it to a much higher level, and in many examples, it's applying it to the real world and new examples and situations that students maybe aren't familiar with. There is another little diagram in your handouts that has some of the different applications and words, key phrases. One of the things that we noticed going through this is sometimes the same word could fall into multiple categories. And with that, it really becomes a question of context. Is this a new situation for students? Are they applying it in a new and different way? So it might be a word that falls under three or four, and it really takes some in-depth analysis to figure out where is that level of thinking. So myself and Mary Gregor and some of the other members of the leadership team created a rubric. It focused mostly on web's depth of knowledge, and you can see across the top are those four different categories. And we pulled out possible action words, not that they're the only words, but a pretty good selection. And you can see, again, one of the words that shows up twice, I believe, is critique in Level Three and Level Four. So it could take on different meaning depending on what the question is really asking and that depth of knowledge expected of students. So we presented this to the facilitators of collaborative inquiry at the course in September-October timeframe, and they had the opportunity to go through an exercise where the K-1 and 2 facilitators looked at a second-grade math common assessment, the 3, 4, 5 facilitators looked at a fifth-grade math assessment, middle school facilitators looked at a, I believe it was sixth-grade assessment, and the high school facilitators looked at an algebra assessment. And they went through the process of categorizing each question on the assessment and determining which level of web's DOK it fell under. So I'm going to turn it over to Deb and Amy, who have some examples for you.
So you'll see in the chart the results that ended up happening from last year to this year when we changed the tests. And it was because of the facilitators' meeting in September that precipitated these changes. Cara asked me to bring an example of a math test. So you'll see that there. It says "school year 2013-14." So I brought that. That is for our higher-level freshmen coming from the eighth grade. They're taking it in the fall. This is the first major assessment they had, so I thought it was a good one to bring for all the facilitators to look at. And so when I sat down with the rubric with the other facilitators and was looking through this, although some of the other facilitators thought they were harder questions, I looked at them through the lens of what I was teaching currently in the class. I was, I said to myself, "These are all Level Ones. We're not really challenging them at all." So what I did, leaving the class, is on our next collaboration day, I pulled the math department together, and we did the same exercise that I did with the facilitators. So we went through the tests that we had given the previous year, and pretty much, we were all in agreement that, for the most part, they were all Level Ones, and then there was, you know, two Level Twos and maybe a Level Three. So these students were the ones that were trying to get into our honors, Algebra II program, so we felt we needed to challenge them a little bit more. So we reworked the test for this year, and so you'll see there's less questions in total. So there were twenty-eight questions on the test we gave last year and only seventeen this year. However, the number of Level Ones went way down, and the number of Level Twos and Level Threes went way up. And they do take a little bit longer because there's a little more application and skill and thinking behind them, so they do take a little bit longer as they're going through. But you have the examples in front of you that you can see, you know, what type of question. We added in some error analysis, so they had to find the error, correct the error, use their own math vocabulary. They not only just had to solve a system, which could be Level One recall, they had to explain why they were choosing the method they chose. So it was bringing in that writing component that I talked about last time I was here as well. Briefly, you know, it's only a couple of sentences, but still using that math vocab as well.
So I chose to look at a chemistry assessment. The chemistry teachers at North Andover High, we've been doing common assessments for the last few years, and so when we first looked at the depth of knowledge, I first thought, "Well, we're science teachers. We're going to have lots of extended thinking." And when we actually went back and started working with the rubric, I realized that while we had, you know, some Level Three, still a good portion of the assessment was at Level One and Two. Things like classifying and recall, some small application questions, but we weren't really asking them to extend their thinking much, while there were some strategic thinking questions there. So we took the rubric, analyzed the questions, and we decided that we needed to ask more in-depth questions of our students. So we reworked the assessment, and we actually ended up not cutting questions, but adding questions to the assessment. And these are found on the last page. So they still have to do some strategic thinking, and then we asked them to expand upon that in several follow-up questions where they have to apply the information and tie in some real-world examples that they may or may not have been familiar with prior to. On the other side of that, in the classroom, knowing that we did some changes to the assessment, we also took the time to look at how we were presenting the material to make sure that the students were better prepared to answer these higher-level thinking questions when they took the assessment.
So these were two examples of high school teachers that have worked with their cohorts to change assessments. I do want to point out that across the district, there are many other examples, and we've witnessed a lot of that take place throughout the curriculum days. Yesterday, we were with the elementary teachers across the district, and they were, again, looking at the rigor and the relevance and thinking about how they can apply that to their classroom. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have time for a quick question?
Sure. I actually had one too, so go. The question I have is based on what do we expect the distribution to look like? Is it, we still have some skewedness? And is that being consistently applied across the other programs, the other curriculum components?
I would say it's going to vary in most cases. I think, to me, the bigger piece is that we are exposing students to Level Three and Level Four and really pushing them. For teachers, it's important that they look at where is the student coming in. You know, there are some students, especially the earlier grades, that really, Level One, Level Two, as they're starting to learn how to do school and how to answer those questions, they might see more on that end. But again, we have students of a wide range, and that's really where the differentiation comes in, in both instruction and the assessment, and giving them opportunities to really reach higher levels. So I'd say it varies.
So I think only Mr. Gross could probably answer any of the chemistry questions on here.
I'm having trouble with a few of them, to be honest with you.
But I am wondering, what's the reaction from the students as they're doing this? Because, you know, when I look at some of the algebra questions from two years ago, I look at them and, you know, it would take me a minute, but I think I could solve them. And then I look at the ones from this year. I think it is, yeah, it's this year, yes. And what I really like about it is the problem-solving piece of it. And I think it takes it to the level of really kind of understanding how you use it post-that test. And, you know, I struggle all the time, and, you know, I look at different things now, and I'm like, "Oh, I can just do that in Excel." But, you know, looking at it from here, from having to do it in school, I'm just wondering what their reaction is and if they're seeing how it's applied in the real world a little differently than maybe in past experiences.
For most of the students, they're actually very excited to apply it. Sometimes when I introduce a lesson, I have to say, "Alright, I'm going to show you the how, just the mechanics to get through it," and sometimes it's a little dry and it's a little boring. And then it's not until the next day that they know how to do the mechanics of it and we get to the application that they really, like, you can see the reactions, I know this sounds corny, but you can see the reactions in their face, and they really, they're like, "Oh, this is how it works. I get it now." So I felt with all the Level Ones, you probably, you know, you're solving for x, and they can sort of do it with anything, but with the applications, they really have a love of math more than if they're just solving the equations. They get a little bored. So they've had a good reaction to all of these, writing about it, solving it, finding out problems.
And do you feel like the, based on the questions that were challenging them more or just differently, or how does that kind of, like, even to test scores?
So, this is interesting because they're coming from the eighth grade, and it's a big transition into the high school, not just mathematically, not just academically, but eighth grade to freshman year. So they get this test at the end of September. So they've been in the high school for four years, trying to adjust to everything. So, so they, not only adjusting academically, but socially. So when they're going through these tests and trying to work through the problems, it really gets them thinking more, and I think they just see the difference between what level they should be in, what their path is going to be, and it gives them a clear picture of where they're going to go over the next four years.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, teachers. And just one last thing, we were thinking about examples of feedback by having you guys take the exams, turn them in to me, and we'll give you examples of feedback.
Something about taking a test.
We weren't going to let Brian and Stan do the science ones. They get the math, and we'll go down the other end. But thank you so much. Awesome job, teachers.
Thank you again. I don't think that I read it out earlier, but I know that we at least have somebody here who's anticipating the old business 10A, which is the second reading of the proposed changes to policy JCA, which is the assignment of students to schools. So I think if it's okay with the committee, even though I didn't necessarily state it earlier, I think we would.
Out of 10M.
I'm sorry?
The 10A?
10, yes, 10A, sorry. I'm just trying to catch up on my pages here, too. I apologize. Just downloading. You want a paper copy while we're waiting? Yeah, if you have it ready. Perfect, thank you. Okay. So it's downloading here, but we had looked at making modification to this policy regarding how students who are outside of their attendance area are able to attend different schools or when students are part of a special education program, that they have siblings who are able to be incorporated into that school. And so we've had some options, we've had some discussions, and then there's been some redlining of this over the past, believe it or not, couple of months as we've talked through this.
Mr. McDavid, my only question was, seems like there was kind of an optional paragraph? I didn't quite understand. Like, Ms. Warren had submitted something that, is it proposed replacement for another paragraph in there? I didn't quite get that. Or am I, was I looking at the wrong?
If I'm correct on this, Mrs. Warren, so number three, you were, I think the formatting of it is a little bit different, but I think you were looking to replace how we had worded originally number three with your paragraph?
Yeah, is that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
So I think that was a suggestion for us to discuss. So, I think that was a suggestion for us to discuss.
So, do you want to make a change to that?
But I guess, in essence, what it's saying is that the, a parent who desires a student to be located within a school that their sibling is at, if I'm reading this correctly, would have preferential placement over new students in the district. Is that what I'm hearing?
That they'd be allowed to attend the same school.
Yeah, which I think that's our intent, right?
Preferential, yes.
We want to keep families together, recognizing that every school does not have the same programming.
Correct.
In the case of special needs.
Okay, so I can, I think if, I think if we say, in the number three where it's blue, if you have...
Yep, I, I saw a copy.
If a student is enrolled in a North Andover school outside of his or her attendance area, the family can request to have siblings attend the same North Andover school.
For example, this applies to scenarios where a student might be placed out of their attendance area and enrolled in a special program offered at another North Andover school. Goes on to discuss bus transportation. Okay. So, I guess my only hesitation with this is that it's a may request, I mean, you can always request.
Well, right, that's, if you look at the very top, it says, the second line says, special permission may be granted for the following reasons. So, and then, we've said all along.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I think it really, it draws the capture of the essence. I've got students in different schools, I would prefer to have my students at the same school, and that school may not be inside my attendance area. And that gives the special permission clause an opportunity to be evaluated. Does that make sense? It's eliminating the prioritization of students, right? Right? So, I guess the question is, how clear is our, how explicit does the policy have to be? The existing paragraph three says it's, that we recommend, the committee recommends prioritizing. And the current draft just indicates that it's permissive.
I think, I think if we include priority, I don't think it's clear what priority of what and before who.
Okay.
So, I think, what I at least tried to do was to provide this as an, as part of, I think, well, I think I was trying to sum up what we had, our last conversation of, that we wanted this to be an option so that if families wanted to have the child, have their children attend the same school, that they could request to do so.
What it doesn't capture is that that would be in priority over new students in the district for the same, for the same spot in the area school or the new area school. And I think that's the, that's the crux of the issue we're faced with.
Well, I think the problem is you're going to have to define what a new student means. Does that mean new student moving into the district, new student for that school, new student for that grade? And I think, I think if you go down that road, I think you're going to have to be very clear on what that definition is.
Well, Dr. Hutchinson, I mean, you've dealt with these numerous times. Do you have any guidance or recommendation on how to disambiguate this?
Well, the way, the way it has always been is that if we have room, we do what we can to place. And what was getting put into this one was a priorization. And I agree with your distinctions between, well, then you have to define it a little more clearly. But that also could be done procedurally, an attachment, I mean, not an attachment, that's just the procedure then. We could write procedures for what the priorization would be. That doesn't have to be in the policy though, we could simply write the procedures.
I think if I understand it, that ideally, in the district, if we, if families want their children together, that that's, I think, the goal.
Yep, absolutely.
Of the district. I just think that, I think if we, I think we need to be cautious about how much we, how specific we try to be. And in that, by being specific, we may actually create more issues.
More problems.
Yeah, so...
Mr. Chairman, is there intent to vote on this tonight? Because what I have in front of me, I assume everyone does, it's redlined, there's comments on it. I don't know if, I could vote for it in this, in this format right now. I mean, if we're discussing it, that's fine, but I think Ms. Warren makes a lot of good points. And I just think that maybe, I don't want to put her on the spot, but if she sat down with the superintendent and maybe Mr. Gross, they could maybe iron out some of these, these other issues. But, I mean, there's a couple of comments on here too. I don't, I don't know who those comments come from. I assume they come from you?
Yeah.
And those legitimate questions, so.
Who is RJ 22?
Well, RJ 22, I think, is the one that was, I have no idea.
Yeah, okay. So, I think if we can get a cleaned version...
And again, is there a pressing issue that we need to...
I don't think there is until we start doing assignment of schools, maybe perhaps for the kindergarten class, incoming kindergarten class. Otherwise, so if they have this for the next meeting, would work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just want to make sure there's nothing pressing, there's not a family holding...
Nothing pressing in between now and the next meeting.
Okay, so cleaned up version and maybe we could, we could circulate that well in advance of the meeting?
Yep. Okay. So, we will hold on that?
Can I get a question about the bus? Why is school committee granting bus permissions?
Is that M A S C language?
The last paragraph, it talks about bus, that if we're going to have busing provided, that the school committee grants that permission, it just, I don't know why it would be school committee granting busing.
It's financial, it's a financial impact.
What?
I think that's because there's a financial impact.
That was put in, that wasn't there originally.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who put that in.
No, I think that was there originally. I think the piece that's not, was the red piece was not there originally, but the, the black text was there originally.
I don't think we've ever, I don't think I've ever seen it come here where we've approved a student.
Right.
Where that, you've been here seven years, is that?
I'm sorry?
You've been here seven years, have we ever seen...
It's a tough day, I can't hear.
He's saying, has he ever seen busing come out?
We can check on the source there too.
Okay.
Nope.
Anyway, Millie, how is it we're cleaning this up? This shit...
Yep, no, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, just going forward, I know my personal preference is if we're going to have a final vote on a policy, you know, words have meaning and to have it presented like this is just, I don't think the right way to do it. So, I think this is more of a working-type document, not a final one to vote on.
Okay, thank you. You want the page for your notes or are you okay?
Here. Perfect. Thank you. All right, so we will jump on to, there's no motion on that, so we will jump on to 10B for the fiscal year budget status report. Mr. Millie?
So, since the last budget update, there haven't been too many changes. I was, I was waiting for the update from the finance director for the town so that I could update their information as well. But you can see that we had some highlighted areas that went up since the last update. There were some students that were pending and possible out placements and they, two of those did occur. So, our out-of-district tuition is now seven hundred fifty-six thousand more than what we would have anticipated. And our snow overtime went up a little bit. So, right now, we are at a million dollars, fifty-seven thousand, more than we would have anticipated. There's still one more student that could possibly go out, and that would cost an additional fifteen thousand. I can give you an update on our extraordinary relief submission. It, we came within thirty thousand dollars of qualifying, but just missed the, the level that we needed to reach. Not that that's a good thing, actually, it means that you spent twenty-five percent more than the previous year. But once you reach the twenty-five percent, that's when it starts counting. And like I said, we reached, and we still are working with them in submitting, you know, these claims that we could still qualify, but it doesn't look like we will. It looks like we're going to be just at that level.
So, Mr. Millie, what was the date that we had to hit that 125, right?
It's for the year, but the submissions were due by March 31st. And like I said, we're not there yet and it doesn't look like we're going to get there for the year.
And that does not include transportation, right?
It does not. Now, in case of special education funding, it almost never includes transportation. And I will say that getting to that level doesn't then get us any money retroactively, it's only any funds we spend over that amount. So, it's not like we're losing by just missing it. And then, regarding funding that has, we've had to offset this deficit, as we talked about before, we had the town manager money that he had set aside for contingency in FY-15, a hundred seventy-five thousand, we prepaid twenty-one thousand. We had set aside a hundred fifty thousand as contingency, our turnover savings was one fifteen. We've been able to save within the budget so far, a hundred seventy-six thousand. And then, the funds that will be able to transfer expenses to transportation and food services, total eighty, so that's seven hundred seventeen thousand for a total of three forty, seven thirty-three. The other remaining possible reduction is the fact that in FY-14, the town manager had set aside a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the reason that that's not readily available is that there was no mechanism for that to remain available. And so, while he is committed to trying to provide that, it's kind of the impetus for establishing that stabilization fund.
Right.
Because that's a mechanism that works.
Where's that hundred fifty thousand dollars right now?
Excuse me?
Where is it right now?
The hundred fifty thousand?
Well, you said from FY, maybe I can't hear you that well, Jim, but I thought you said, is the hundred fifty thousand from FY-14?
Correct.
So, where, is that, is it in free cash or where is that?
That's where it would be, right, if it was available. It was never designated for anything other than it was committed to, but it was not, it was not made part of the budget.
Okay.
And so, there was no mechanism for carrying that commitment forward.
Is there, is there a town meeting remedy for this or...
Well, what's going to end up happening is, you know, if you look at the town side of things too, there is, there is going to be something that will have to happen, a town meeting for both the snow and ice and the school deficit to take care of it. And that would be part of the discussion.
I think I see it here. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, we're anticipating a town meeting having to basically pass this?
To, to resolve this, yes. And then, you can see, there has been an increase, there were additional snowstorms since the last update that increased the current snow and ice deficit for the municipal side to just over eight hundred thousand dollars. So, that's where it is right now.
So, I'm sorry, when we talk about it being remedied at town meeting, what exactly does that mean?
We're going to, well, I won't be there on Monday, but Hutch will have his regular Monday meeting with the town manager and we'll have to get into discussions about what that looks like and we can relay that information to you.
So, when is the deadline for the warrant? That that would have to be submitted by?
It's, it's coming up, they're getting those together.
Are there any other programming changes that we think we need to do to curb that deficit or at this point?
It's, it's, yeah, and the only thing I'll emphasize, and, you know, it, sometimes, it's, it can be compelling when you realize this, but what, with the hundred fifty thousand, we were able, we've been able to sustain so far an eight hundred thousand dollar hit. We couldn't sustain a million-dollar hit. So, did pretty well, made a lot of adjustments, but you just can't sustain that kind of a hit. And that's, you know, really emphasizes the need for that stabilization fund. But there's an item that you guys have to consider about professional, you know, personal days, that's, you know, the types of things we've been trying to do to see if we can impact this even more.
Based on the fact that we're already operating on expense controls, are there any impacts based on next year's budget that you can foresee as we didn't get it done this year and we don't have it in the budget for next year that we need to be aware of?
The way it works every year is you start out the year with that money funded in its part, the proper line items. The reimbursement will be much higher from Circuit Breaker because of the expenses that we are generating this year. We did not budget that high Circuit Breaker number to begin with. So, given the stabilization fund, that fact, and that we had already built in some contingency, I am optimistic that, as I am every year, that the other items will not be impacted as they have been this year.
I'm sorry, Mr. Millie, did you, did you just, I think when you went over this, I'm sorry, I can't get it on my, I have to hold my phone. Oh, thanks. But since we've done the budget, I think that there were, were there additional out-of-district placements since the budget?
There are, there are two, yes.
Okay, so, have we made adjustments for the, or, maybe we can't, I don't, how does that work? So...
We had, like I was just saying, we had built in more in our line item in the budget for out-of-district than we currently had at that time, and we're getting more in Circuit Breaker.
Okay.
So, right now, we have more, but as we see, it goes very quickly.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
When will we know? And I know that it's, you know, things like the utility savings and extraordinary relief, I mean, do we have any projection on when we would know some of those numbers or is that really kind of end, end of the year, down to the wire?
Yeah, next, I'd say in May, we get a better handle on those.
Mr. Millie, so what happens if we can't, if the town manager cannot help us cover most or all of this number, then what do we do exactly? How does that work? We can't go out of the year with a deficit, so then what do we, how do we do that?
That would be the conversation that we'll have.
Do you know when the town will know about their special reimbursement for snow? Is that also before May?
As far as what, how they're, yes, I mean, the town manager's going to have to put together a, I believe, I think is the way it works, it's an article for town meeting. Is that how it's worked in the past?
I guess it's more about if the state is able to help with the emergency snow removal, that might give the town some relief.
It might give them, them some relief. I don't know if that's been determined yet, but it would probably be pretty soon.
I'm just concerned that we're not hedging all of our bets on the state doing something smart for us. And that's the case.
Well, I can tell you that they're not hedging the bets on that because the town manager, while he has estimated what that would be, instructed me not to include it because there's no guarantee.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Let's obviously keep this on the agenda as we start rolling into the tail ends of the month. All right, I think...
Move to 11C.
Move to 11C. Before we do that, there's nothing in, Mr. Millie, 11B for the first reading for the revolving accounts that we would be required to do.
We don't need to do that one tonight. I would ask that we have the first reading of the easement because that one is a little more time-sensitive so that when we have the, the next reading, we could vote and that project can continue to move.
Okay, so C and D?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's jump to first reading and approval of the robotics trip to Louisville, Kentucky. It is 11C.
So, Mr. Chair, move to the committees.
Give me one second to find the page, sorry, Mr. Gross. No, no, I've got it locked now, so...
It's here somewhere.
It is...
I can't hear.
It's page thirty-five.
11C, okay, I got it, good, thank you.
All right. So, it is that the committee suspend the rules and vote to approve the attached proposal for members of the robotics team 8568A to compete in the 2015 VEX Robotics World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky.
So, move. Second.
Right, so is there any discussion?
I think it's just important to know that with the snowstorms and rescheduling of the meetings, this has become time-critical. I think it's just important to know that with the snowstorm and rescheduling of the meetings, this has become time critical.
Yes.
And I know that we were versed on this. I'm perfectly comfortable suspending rules. Looks like a very worthy field trip. I'm not crazy about missing four days of school, but I think the, the experience outweighs that, that loss of attendance. Excuse me, three days of school.
Three days, yeah. And I think it's three days because they're driving to Kentucky, so. It would not be three if it were flying, I think, but.
Yeah.
It, it is.
That's a long drive.
It is a long drive, and it is barely free, or barely cost, so. Any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman? Andrew, I'm sorry, Mr. McDevitt? Do you want me to call you again? I know you hate Mr. Mr. Chairman, sorry.
This makes me feel weird.
I noticed on the, the information in our packet that Mr. Limpert is a possible chaperone, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if it's appropriate for him to, to either make the motion or even vote on this?
I don't see any conflict of interest. I think that's an excellent volunteering example.
Are we gonna be paying for his?
Not being paid.
Are we gonna be paying possibly for his participation? I assume we're paying for Mr., I'm sorry, Motherway?
I, I think we're just paying for the students to participate.
We don't pay for the teachers to go?
The, if Mr. Motherway were going, he'd be paying his own way, and I believe Mr. Limpert is taking care of his. Only the, the only money is for the kids.
I, I think you bring up a point. If Mr. Limpert wanted to abstain, then.
The, the, fine by me, I just thought it, I thought it was interesting how he knew he was.
I read that.
So there's a, a motion and a second?
To suspend the rules, or to?
No, no.
We have to suspend the rules first, right?
Then you have to vote.
Okay.
Yes, didn't you move to suspend the rules? I'm sorry. Mr. Gross?
Yeah, the motion was to suspend the rules to approve the robotics.
And we have to approve. And there's a second for Mrs. Warren? So, is there any additional discussion? So all in favor of suspending the rules for the trip to Kentucky for the world championship? Sorry, I'm blanking on the name, the Vex Robotics World Championship. Say aye.
Aye.
And were there any no's? Any abstentions? Alright, so now we will vote on the motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the attached proposal for members of robotics team eight-five-six-eight A to compete at the twenty fifteen Vex Robotics World Champions in Louisville, Kentucky, as presented in the packet.
Is there a second? A second by Mrs. Warren. All in favor of approving the motion as stated by Mr. Gross, say aye.
Aye.
And any no's? And no abstentions? Alright, so carries five to nothing.
Enjoy the trip.
Yeah, yeah.
Come back with.
Best of luck.
Good luck to the students.
Back with the trophy.
Big trophy.
Thank you.
I think this is the first time we've ever made it that far, so that's fantastic.
Yes, it is. That they qualified, and if you, I don't know all the intricacies, but I know that during the robotics competition, other teams choose teams to join them in their competition. So the number one team chose our team to join them. Their robot then didn't work, and ours actually won the competition for them, so it's pretty exciting. And they are going on a bus with the college, a local community college from Worcester is heading out there also. So that's how our, our team is, is going. They're going on the bus with the Quig, Quigsimug?
Sigamun.
Can't pronounce it, but that's how they get in there. So thank you very much for the approval. They'll be excited.
Excellent. Sigamun, it's an Indian word for difficult to spell.
So let's move on to eleven D, which is the first reading of the safe routes to school easement. There's no action required, but this actually is in regards to setting a path. I think it's about ten feet or so, and there's a pathway that's kind of documented in the picture. I don't know if it's there or not. It looks like it's, I think it's behind us, that will provide a, basically a cement, am I correct, cement pathway for the students?
Concrete sidewalk. A concrete sidewalk.
That's what I meant to say. Is that what I said?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you. So that really just combines.
So, this is an extension of the Safe Routes to School project that's been approved, and the state is funding for, the most part it's Parker Street from the back gate of the middle school to the, to one twenty-five.
Mass Ave.
What did I say?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, sorry, you're right. Mass Ave, that's correct. I think I even wrote one twenty-five. Very good project. I attended the public hearing. People had questions, but they seemed to be very supportive of this project. It should slow down traffic quite a bit and have a better transition into Mass Ave from Parker Street, and provide a beautification of the neighborhood at the same time. This project was chosen because it provides the most accessibility for the most students. Not only the middle school, which is a large population, but also Atkinson as well. So what we're looking for is the school department to provide an easement to the town for this project to build this, to continue the sidewalk at the end of Parker Street as it comes onto the middle school property. So to try to orientate you, if you look at this diagram, this circle area is the rotary and the back entrance of the middle school. And so coming out of that back entrance, you can see this line right here would be the proposed sidewalk and easement they need that would travel along the, the back part of the parking spaces, at the base of the slope that leads to the field, that softball field that's there. And then continue on, and then cut across to connect along the other parking spaces that lead to the gate, and then connect with the sidewalk at the, at the gate. And so you need to have an easement of about ten feet wide to allow that sidewalk to be built, and then it reverts back. And I do have a kind of a satellite view somewhere here. Right here. So here's the back of the, the middle school, there's the rotary, so the sidewalk's gonna come along, right along here, the backside of those parking spaces, and then cut across and continue on to, to Parker Street.
Is that going to, I'm sorry, it's just, it's a little bit hard to see. Is that going to eliminate parking spaces?
No, it does not impact parking spaces, and as it crosses over, it's a crosswalk, it's not a sidewalk. So there's no impact to the, the parking lot itself.
Okay, so it's in a, it's separate from the parking spaces?
Correct. It does not impact any parking spaces.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's just basically how it's laid out by the points.
Correct.
It looks like it's kind of going through the parking.
Yeah, we couldn't get exact, you know, this is us taking a satellite shot and trying to show where it is, but not getting it exactly.
So we won't bill to your specs, right?
Quick question, Mr. Merely, does this have any impact on our abilities to secure that back gate?
No, not at all.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The question was, does this easement prevent us from securing the back gate?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not. If anything, they're hoping that enforcement of the one-way will improve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's not gonna require any additional staffing for?
Any additional?
Any additional crossing guards or additional staffing?
No. No.
I would just recommend, if anyone has questions, to send them to Mr. Merely in advance of our meeting, which I think is the twenty-sixth, if I remember correctly. The thirtieth? Sorry, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I thought it was.
Okay.
It is the thirtieth, you're right, sorry. Alright, so those were the public things that I think we somewhat agreed we would run through at the beginning of the meeting to be able to return to executive session.
Yeah, the only question I have, Mr. Chair, is do you want to do the consent agenda? I do have a correction on the minutes. If there's no urgency in releasing those, I can wait until next meeting.
I think, I, I don't know of any urgency of releasing them, but.
That's fine.
And they're already out, I think, in the packet, so I would just say.
Catch it next meeting.
We'll catch it next meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch any of that, the acoustic.
Acoustic's horrible.
Are we voting on the minutes?
No.
Okay, I was gonna vote on, thank you.
Okay.
Alright. So were you looking for a motion to?
Just drop and go.
Okay, well, I was gonna just jump to.
Oh, sorry.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry.
There, there isn't public comment, but I don't think there's public here, so we'll skip that. And you, I think you were gonna take what I, one of the things I was gonna say, so go ahead.
I just wanted to remind the public that the fifth grade service project, Drop and Go, is this Saturday at the middle school from ten to two. And the website is www.dropitandgo.org, and you have to put the www if you want more information. Also, NAPAC, the North Andover Parent Advisory Council, for children with special needs, is looking for applicants to fill the board for next year. If you're interested, please email northandoverpac@gmail.com.
Spring cleaning time. Thank you.
Anything else from the?
Mr. Chairman? We're gonna do the early release dates next time?
We will do them next time, yep, because the, we've set the calendar. Okay, so the only comment that I had was, Dr. Hutchinson, at least I know you had mailed out to the school families regarding the China program, or exchange program for host families, and I believe that that is up on, is that on the town website and our website?
On the town website and our website.
Okay, so families that may be interested in hosting a student from China next year, please log on to the website and take a look at that. And I would now entertain a motion to return to executive session.
So moved?
Mr. Chair? Move to return to executive session for reason two, or hearing, we're deliberating grievance hearing output, and for reason three, strategy negotiation for NATA, North Andover Cafeteria Association, where an open meeting would hurt the committee's bargaining position, if you so declare. And not to return to open session.
I'll second that.
All in favor of exec session? Mr. Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yeah.
I'm a yes, so.